Yeah, so good afternoon, everyone. Today, we will be discussing how the expanded solution works for service organizations, and more specifically, how Expand It's Planning Board and mobile client work together to empower employees. And I believe most of you are familiar with Expand It, but for those who don't know, Expand It is a Microsoft Dynamics independent software vendor, and we specialize in service management. And if I haven't met you already, my name is Julissa Gonzalez. I work on the marketing and business development side here at Expand It. And I also have Taylor Rogge, who is a field service product expert and business analyst, who will be speaking in just a few minutes. So just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. We are recording today's session, so everyone who registered will get an email with a link to the on-demand version within the next few days. This session will run for approximately 15 minutes, which does include time for Q and A at the end. And if you have any questions throughout the webinar, please feel free to submit them through the Q and A panel on your RingCentral console, so we can address them towards the end. And if for some reason, we don't have enough time to address all of your questions in today's live event, please be assured that we will follow up with you directly following the webinar. And the agenda is as follows, so we'll take a look at the objectives for the webinar. Next, I'll discuss key takeaways. Taylor will then take over and get into the demo part. And as mentioned, we did allocate some time for Q and A at the end, and we'll finish off with next steps and additional resources you may use. So what is the main objective for today's webinar? The main objective of the webinar is to provide an educational training on how the mobile client and planning board work together in the expanded field service software to simplify field operations. And during the training, Taylor will give an overview of the planning board, so sending SMS and emails to technicians from the planning board, viewing the status of each job or service order in real time, creating service orders and jobs directly from the planning board. And she will also go over key features on the mobile client, so viewing the schedule and job details, recording travel time, work time, and materials consumed while out in the field, capturing signatures, images, or any other required information on the mobile client. And without further ado, I'll hand it off to Taylor now to get started with the demo.
All right, hi, everyone. And so today, I'm going to show you guys first the planning board. And this is where your dispatchers, your planners, as we call them, this is where they live. So this is going to show them exactly what's going on all day long on their schedule. This is also where they will create their schedule, where they'll be doing their planning. We also have mapping capabilities, some messaging capabilities. So all of that is done right here through our planner. And then we also have, which I'll show you shortly, is our mobile client. And our mobile client is where your field is living. So those ones that have been scheduled to the jobs, they will be the ones using that mobile client, and their data is then sent directly back over into the planning board, as well as into our approval section before it can go, it goes back into Business Central or the ERP system. So the first thing I want to show you is over here on the left-hand side is we have a little gray box area and some names underneath it. The gray box area is your, what we call a department, and that's usually your global dimension. And underneath there is your resources. So that could be people, heavy equipment, trucks, anything like that. And they are actually assigned over to a department, and that is how we create our groupings. So here in Expand It, we call this a pool. The dark gray area is what a pool is. A pool can be used for staging anything. It can be used out on the mobile device where you put something to the pool, and the mobile users or service techs can actually grab any of that work and start working on it. So that's what a pool is. And then again, these are your resources down here. This is what you can actually plan directly. If it's planned directly to a resource, the only person that will see it in the mobile device is the resource or resources that have been planned. So I'm going to actually do some filtering too. Up here, we have a filter button. This filter, right now, we can see all of our different departments that we have. We have separate, you can filter by certain users maybe that you want. And job statuses, job type, service order type, any of those can be actually filtered down on. Right now, what I had was a department filter. So I was only looking at Europe and North America. I can actually go ahead and add many different ones in here if I would like as well. So I can add those in, maybe I want some equipment as well. So I can select those and click update. What that's going to do is it's now going to filter my planning board for me to see all of this information. Up here, we have our dates. So right now, it is on this, today plus seven days. What I can always do is click on my date, and I can actually go back maybe to last Monday, click update, and it will actually refresh my board right here. And now I can see everything from Monday up until October 5th. And now you can start seeing what your past schedule was, all these boxes right here. These are what are your planned visits. This is what you have created a work order to go out and do a visit. So you may have multiple visits actually scheduled where they're going out for multiple days. So see this one right here that I'm circling? This one is two, a two-day visit. So it actually is creating two planned entries on Thursday and on Friday, which allows you to go out and, as the mobile client, go out there and clock into each day. So these on the screen right here, these are those visits. As you can see, they all have different colors. We have different statuses up here, the status key. We have inactive, when a planned visit is inactive, that actually means that it will not be visible on the mobile device. So we have a lot of people that come in here, and they create their planned entries, and they put it to an inactive status. And that inactive status is more of their staging. So they are not quite sure who's going to go out there. They want to see what their schedule looks like. They just move it to inactive. When you want it to be visible out on the mobile side, that point, you are going to mark it as either appointed or accepted. And these two, that's before the work has even started. So they may be appointed or accepted two weeks in advance, depending how far in advance you're actually scheduling. Then we come over to these next colors right here, travel and started. So the darker teal and the lime green colors, that is when they're actually working on the site. So we could actually see that, you know, Gwen here is still working from September 24th over here. So Gwen is still out there working on this job site. That is what the started means. We break up travel time as well. So travel time is when you're traveling to and from the site, and start is when you're actually working on the job site itself. And the reason we do that is you can then analyze your data a little bit better of being able to see how long it took you to get to and from the site versus how long you are actually there. Gives you more of an analytical view of the data. So those are our two statuses. We have an on hold status as well. So maybe if you don't want any of the time to be captured to that job, maybe you had to run to Home Depot or something, you don't want that time on there. You can always mark it on hold. But at the end of the day, you're always going to come back in and actually say that I am completed or incompleted for the day. And that's where these, the orange and the dark blue come into play. So those two are significant, where one's saying, I'm coming back out because I still have other planned entries or planned visits to come to. Versus completed means all of the work that has been scheduled, and I believe I am done. That is those two right there. And you can always mark something as urgent as well to notify your team. So that is the planning board right there. Again, you can scroll back all the way through up to today, the 29th. You can see we don't have very much on our schedule. So we're going to go ahead and add something on. So if you are ready to schedule something that has already been created over in the ERP system, again, we're integrating with the ERP. So we're pulling that data that exists. So any new and modified records, we're pulling that in and displaying it here. If you are wanting to, we'll go through this as well. We can actually create a new work order as well. So either way, we can do it. So I'm going to actually show you based on one that has already been created in Business Central. I'm going to click Schedule New Job. And this list right here is going to pull up, and it's going to show me all of my job, my service orders that have not been planned yet. And this is good, because now I want to be able to say, okay, this is what I want to plan, and I have easy ways of being able to plan that. So I can come in here. I can see that here is my customer, here is my sales order number. I can always come in here and type one in if you know that service order number as well. Or I could just come here, and I can actually drag and drop this onto my planning board. And by doing that, I can do this, and I can drop it right here over to Emma. Drag and drop it there, it's going to ask me, are you sure you want to do it? And my list will continue to come up. The reason it's going to continue to come up is it's asking, do you want to continue to plan? You do, you can always keep clicking and adding them on. The other way you can actually plan this, if you want to actually go into those details, I can expand my little triangle here. I can get more information, maybe my site address, my service order number, my addresses, my customer, all of this information I can see here. And now I can actually click this plus sign to schedule the job. And it's going to pull up another window that you can see here, and this is actually my work order. So this is the details that it's pulling over. Now, you can always add in a work description. If that work description did exist over in the ERP system, it would pull that in. So that's actually your service order description comes in here, and it can always be modified. So we could always say the resort, you know, room 345 or something like that. You can put more information, repair toilet. We can put that in there as well. And all of that is pulling over. So we can see any of the service order types. If there was a customer PO, if it's been ordered, all of that is coming over. So from here, I can actually say that this is an urgent visit, and you saw that it just brought up the urgent notification here. And I can say that, hey, you want to call before that visit as well. That's giving the information to your mobile technician to know what needs to be done. Now I have my customer information. This is pulling in the customer information, the work address, which is, can be mapped to your ship-to addresses. There's invoice addresses. Well, these two, customer and invoice two are not editable. It's just displaying the information. Whereas your work address, you want to make sure that you're getting to the right job at the right time, you know, right time. So if that work address needs to be updated, that can always be updated as well. Next one we have is tasks. If there were service items on this service order, those tasks will be visible here. You can always add a service item task right here by clicking into the service item. I can say, we're doing a lava machine here. It will bring in that task right into that. Now I move over to my lines. I can always plan some lines here. It will actually pull into my products or my resources, so you would make that decision. If I want to say, here's my product, it's going to my task of lava machine. I don't know, we're going to add an advanced water machine here. I can select my inventory location and put how many I'm planning on using. Now, there's a difference between planning and consume. So we're actually planning to use these four pieces. But when you go out to the job site, maybe you only use two of those. That's okay. What we'll do on the mobile side is we can then consume what we want. So that is what a planned line is. So we've been able to add them there. If you had your service item worksheet that existed over in the service order in Business Central, those planned lines would automatically show up right here. That is what you are planning to do. Again, you then consume out in the field. Let's skip over planning really quick, move on to comments. We have the ability to send internal messages or comments. You can send portal messages if you're linked over to our service portal, or you can even do invoice comments. Those invoice comments do go back over into Business Central at the service order or job level. So I can add an internal message here for my field, and they will be able to see that out on the mobile device. The next one we have is our attachments. I can always add an attachment here. We can handle any type of file. So I'm going to go ahead and just drop in a PDF or picture right here, and that will go in. And see, it's now moved down to the bottom. That means that is attached to this work order for the lifetime of its history. So that is a visible out on the mobile device now. Now, the mobile side, they can actually drop in attachments to you as well, so that you can see maybe knowing what the job site looks like, what the condition of it is. They can add those attachments as well, and that would be visible here. Forms, those get filled out over in the mobile. We'll go over that shortly. And then we have our history. So the history is actually the history of the customer. So you can always go down to the service item, and this is going to show you any orders, comments, forms, materials, anything consumed or planned for that customer or the service item. You can limit down what you want to see. Messages, I will show you messaging. We can send text messages for this planned entry. You can also send emails. It will keep a log here of what has been sent, and the reason being, so that you don't have to go back and search for anything. It will, you know, you can use this as part of your history. You can understand what was sent, when it was sent, has it been received. So we come back over to our planning. Now, when we did our drag and drop onto the planning board, it actually automatically created this planning entry. Now, what I need to do here is because I wanted to go look at all my details first and make some changes, is I'm going to click Add New. By clicking Add New, it's going to now show me my list of resources, and I can add that I want Taylor to go to that job. So I can add it as an appointed status, and I can now say what day I want her to go there. So I'm going to actually say it's going to be the 29th, and I want you to be there at, let's say, 10:00 AM. And that is going to add it right there. So I now have the ability to change my duration here. So if I put in that I know that this is going to probably take you about 18 hours or 16 hours, let's say. I can type in 16 here. Now you're going to see that this has changed. Oops, I totally changed my date here. I want to make sure you can see this. So I want to do September 29th, sorry about that, 29th. So now you can see what to, for, in order for me to get this job done in the 16 hours that I'm planning, it's actually going to change my end date to October 1st. So these two are correlated to each other, and it will create planned entries or visits out on the planning board, so that I have each day I'm able to clock in to fulfill my 16-hour duration. So I'm going to go ahead and click Add, and it will create my planned entry. Now I'm going to click Update and Close. We're going to say, okay. And now this screen is going to close, and we're going to see down here, we just created our two entries. So here are visits. Now it knows I'm going to go out there on Wednesday for some hours, Thursday for a full day, and then on Friday, I only go out for two hours right there. So that is how it will plan it. Now each, all three days, I have something to clock my time against. So from this planning board now, I can actually add resources. So I can right-click, click Add Co-workers. And now I can actually say, okay, I want to add, let's say, Gwen and John onto my planned entry, and they're going to get their own visits now. So I can click Update, and you're going to see that it's now added all of our visits together. Over here, you'll see a little link icon. That means that we are linked together. So if I move Gwen's out to Thursday, let's say, I'm going to say, okay, you're going to go out now Thursday. It's going to ask me, do I want to reschedule all instances? I'm going to say, okay. And it's going to shift everything over. And it's going to allow us now to be able to not have to go and replan nine different planned entries. The same goes if I move Gwen to Jason. I'm going to click Okay and Okay. It's just going to move Gwen's down to Jason. It didn't move John and Taylor. It's going to keep everything linked together on how you move it around the schedule. So it makes it very easy in order to plan multiple resources. Now, if you had a scissor lift like you do up here, you can always add the scissor lift as well onto these entries and be able to say that we need to go out there and use that scissor lift, make sure that it's not being sent out to do job sites at the same time. That's where your resources of your equipment and heavy operations comes in handy as you can now start actually planning to use that equipment out in the field. So that is how you do some linking. We can send some messages here. So if I right-click on my message or my planned entries, sorry, and click Message, it's going to pre-populate a message that we have done in our configuration. It's pulling in some of that information of when you're going to be, when the visit is, who your technician is, so you don't have to type it all out. Now, up here, I can actually add in some, an email address and a text or a phone number to send a text message. Down here, where it says internal messages, those go directly out to the planning side of it. So our mobile device, that's what an internal message is. Now, your subject, you can always edit that. Your active from and to relates back to your internal messages. If you want to add a calendar visit, you can add this calendar visit for your emails that goes out. Now, those emails can be moved around as well, and you can send, send all of these calendar invites. Message, same thing. I'm actually going to remove a little bit so that we get under the 140 right there. So basically, to send this text message, you need less than 140 characters. So by doing this, now I can click Send, and it's going to pull up a notification here saying that my email's been sent, my text has been sent, and so is my internal message. So we are good to go. We've sent everything. If you can see my phone right now, it just dings, letting me know that there is a planned visit. So that is how messages against a planned entry works. You can always send messages to all of your users within a pool. There's a blank message right here that you can fill in. The, this has come handy during COVID especially for everyone. They can send their messages out to all of their team instead of individual text messages, emails, phone calls, things like that. So you can always add in, please come to the office tomorrow. I can say all you want to, active for today's date, because if they see it on the 30th, well, we don't want them to come in. So we can say, please come to the office. I can then click Send, and it would send my message out to all of my users in North America. That is some of our scheduling. We also have the ability to see maps. Here are our map features right here. And because I have all kinds of jobs planned across the world, it is showing me my entire, entire world right now. But I can actually scroll down into what I want to look at right here. I can see that, you know, Jessica and Taylor are over here. I can see all of my planned visits and the sales or service orders or work order numbers that it is related to. And I can always filter down and see what else the details are. Now, if I show you this, I can actually click on one of my planned entries on my board, and it will show me where my, my actual job is scheduled for the day. So now I can see any nearby users. I can see any available jobs nearby, things like that. I can see what is going on out there. Makes it really easy for us to see, see any state lines, any city lines, what available work is there as well. So that is the mapping that we have. Again, we're not trying to recreate routing or anything like that. We're just displaying the information to make route decisions as a planner. Okay, so that is kind, those are like the big key items of our product. Obviously, there's a lot more that we have available as well. So the one thing, though, I did want to show you is we can actually create a new service order or job directly from Expand It. So if you had somebody call you and say, it's an emergency, we don't have time to go add it over in Business Central, wait for the data to come through. We can directly create it here by clicking Create New Work Order. And what that's going to do is it's going to be able to pull up some information. So I can actually type in my customer. I can see the list of customers, so maybe I want to do Blue. I can see my Blue Mountain Resort. I can add in a work description, so we can say, Blue Mountain. And let's say, Resort 15. So we can add in our work description and add this, that in. Now, I can then go over and search for service items or a project. I can see any projects or ship that are related to the resort. I can, and these are your jobs. I can then go over and see any service items, so those are for your service. I can see those service items, and maybe I want to grab the ski lift track system. I can grab that and click Proceed. And now I am creating my job right now, or my service order right now. Now, this service order will not go over into Business Central until all of the time and materials have been consumed. But this is one way to get this onto the schedule as quick as possible. So you're going to have to end up filling a lot of this in, because it's not pulling it directly from Business Central at this point. It will pull in your customer work address and invoice too, because this work address is related to a ship too. It's going to pull that in and not make it editable. You can pull in your task, which that was your service item that we selected. Now, we would come back in here and pull any of our planned lines that we want to add on here. So it's going to ask us to fill all of this in, click Add, and now we have planned, planned this one out. Again, I'm going to add a planned entry, click Add, and save and close. So that is your basics, being able to get something planned on your planning board. We have it planned to Eric, and now that is sent out to Eric, and he can immediately get working on that job when he sees it on his calendar. So now I'm going to switch over to our mobile device really quick and show you how that works. So I'm actually going to show it to you on an iPad right now. Our mobile application is, basically, it's a URL. It's something that gets saved onto your home screen. It's allowing you to get all of the updates almost immediately. You don't have to go into the App Store and make sure that you're up to date and you're on the right version. This is making it super easy for your users to just get in. You can see it looks and acts exactly like an app as well. So first thing they're going to do is they're going to come into Service, and they are going to see their list of all of their work that they are working on. So I am actually going to pause this job that I was on and come over here onto my list. I can see all of my jobs as a list view. So you can scroll down. I can always see it as a calendar as well. That's an easier view for everyone. They can see what has been planned to them over the weeks. Here is my order pool that we were talking about. I can always see any orders that are in the order pool for that particular department I'm assigned to or my jobs. Those are all mine, those are the ones that are assigned to me. Personally, I like the list, so I'm going to come down here. Here's the one we just created, that resort room 345. I'm going to select that one, and it will pull me to the next screen. And that next screen is going to show me all of my service order details, right? It's going to show me my planned entry details and my service order. Up here, you're going to see your two buttons, Start Travel and Start. When I am ready to start driving to the site, I'm going to click Start Travel. It's going to change my task and say that we are started. And then I can also see my duration. It's, I'm expected to be out there for eight hours today, and I am starting to track my time. Here is my address. You can always click on the car, it will open up the directions. You can see that we've marked, please call before the visit. Here's my urgent status as well. I can see who is linked to this job. These are my coworkers who are expected to be out on the job with me today. And here are those internal messages you can see right here. They can always respond back as well right there and send that back into the planning side as well. Now I can move over and see my details. I can see that I'm working on a lava machine, it's in process. Here's my service item number. All that information I can see right here as well. Now, now that I'm at, let's say, I'm at the job site, I'm ready to start working. I will now start, click Start. And that means my time is being tracked against working there. So I let that run and I come over to my tab down here, my time tab. You will actually see that I have travel time versus work time. So I have 15 hours and, or sorry, 15 minutes and 15 minutes all done through a rounding. This is all because I am using my time trackers, which are those two buttons right there. Down below, though, we actually have all of our work types that are available in Business Central, and time can be added directly from here as well if needed. So if I know that this is an emergency call, let's say, I can, or yeah, let's do, actually, let's do kilometers. Let's say I need to track all of my time, my miles that I'm actually traveling. I can click this plus button and type in that I traveled for 15 miles. Maybe you get paid your mileage. And I can click 15 right there, and it will now show 15 miles as usage. But these two timers are still kind of going based on which status you're in, what button you have just clicked. So I'm still tracking my work time. If you add in a work time manually, it's going to add that on top of what the automatic timer is grabbing. If I move over to the right one more, you're going to see If I move over to the right one more, you're going to see this is where our planned materials are. This is where we thought we were, you were going to need for. Maybe you ended up using two. I can click my subtract arrow, go down to those two, click my shopping cart. And now I have seen my materials used goes to two. That is your consumption that will get sent back over into Business Central. I always have my list down here though, where I can actually type in part of a word and it will filter my list down to what I want to be able to grab. And I can say, okay, three of these in my truck, I'm going to consume those three right there. Okay, we also have something what we call a smart item. Smart items are basically for your, a lot of customers use them actually for their expenses. Maybe they had to run to Home Depot. They needed to use, get some tape. They got, you know, let's say, three of those. And now they just need to put in their cost of how much that was. We'll say fifteen ninety-nine right there. We can add that all in. This is a non-inventoried item, so we can add that in and be able to consume it as well. So those are our materials. And then go over to our last tab, which is our attachments that we had saved. We can see, oh, here's our, our view of the picture that we added. We can see any of the previous visits. I can add files here as well. Let's say I want to add a file. I can click Okay. And now this is being sent back into the approval section and saved with the work order as well. So that is how they can go in and just start saving any pictures from their mobile device. So the big one that we wanted to show you is our forms. So these forms, you can actually create these within Expanded. You have the ability to add new questions. There are so many different options. You know, different dropdowns, list views, yes, no, not applicables, signatures, pictures, all of that is available right here. So what I can do is I can click on my work summary. I want to fill out my work summary. This is showing you any of the materials and time that has been consumed. This is all, obviously, always something that you can create. It's going to ask if the work was completed to satisfaction. We're going to say, yes. How was the service? You know, this is actually a text box. We can say it went great. Customer is happy. So we can add that in, ask what the job site is. It's giving you a view. We're going to say it was left clean. You can explain that condition of the job site. We can actually take a picture directly in this this form and it will print out on the form as well. We can put in the customer name, let's say, Blue Mountain Resorts. And now I can require a signature. So because I haven't done my signature yet and this is a required field, it will not let me close out of this form yet. So until I have completed all of my different required fields, it will not let me click Okay. So I can then directly from here, click Print. And as you can see, it is actually an easy to fill out form. It doesn't have the header information. It doesn't look like a PDF. We are displaying it for the field to be as easy as possible. Now, when you email it or print it out, it will actually create the header information and send that back in with all of your answers as well. So directly from here, actually, I can click this message button and I can enter in any of the recipients that I want to add in here as well. So once this form goes back into, into approvals within our system, you can actually see what's going on. These questions can always be edit from, from within our approvals and sent back out into the customer as well. So I can always add that there. Now, if I click Okay, you're going to see that I have my form right here. And this is an easy one. You can now come back in. Maybe you said, oh shoot, we forgot to enter, forgot to clean the bathroom. You can enter more information back in here too, until you have finalized this particular work order. So now that we are traveling, right, it's showing that we're traveling. I want to show you our planning board really quick. And I can update our planning board and you can actually see right down here, the resort. It is interactive with each other. So as soon as I clicked that button, it was showing that it's in a started status. If I come back over to my mobile and click now that we're traveling back to this warehouse or wherever we're going and it's in a travel status. If I update my board, you're going to see that it changed over to this darker teal. So they're very interactive with each other. In our mobile side, we actually have offline capabilities. So those offline capabilities super popular right now, especially as you're going through maybe some new construction areas, new development areas. Or you're, you know, you have just no reception. What our system is doing is it's constantly looking to see if there is any reception. And when there is reception, you'll see this cloud with a check mark. When it has lost reception, it will show an orange cloud. And it's going to consistently try to look for that reception, but it doesn't affect the field user from actually continuing. If they had no service, they could keep on changing their information. They can submit this as a finished work order. They can start their next one as long as it had been loaded on their device. They can just keep going through their day. As soon as the reception has been retrieved again, it will actually send all that data back into the planning board. And it will grab any new data as well. So that is how the offline client works. It's very helpful for a lot of our customers. And the history right here, I want to show you super quick history. This is basically because I'm working on this particular service order. It is filtering automatically down to the customer location and service item. And now I can see any orders, tasks, comments, forms, things like that, that have been also created against these particular filters. If I removed one of those, I could actually see more information. If you only want to see what, all of the orders related to that customer, I could see the by date, all of these different orders. Any of the tasks that have been created and worked on, any comments, forms filled out. I can see all of this and actually understand what happened. I can see my work summary as well from a different visit. Same thing with materials. I can see all these materials that have been consumed, any attachments. So those pictures are really handy for when you're going out to multiple visits. Okay, so now that we are done, we said, okay, I am complete for the day. I can click Finish. It's going to ask me, do I want to mark my task status as partially serviced? I'm going to click Okay. And the reason that's saying partially serviced is because it's telling you there are already visits planned for another day for this job, because we planned this across multiple days, those three days. It's going to allow, it just already knows that I am not finished yet and I still need to go out. Where you could also say, well, I did finish everything and I want to cancel all other visits. Now, it's going to ask you, do you want to update the task status to finish because I'm canceling everything? So that is one hundred percent possible here as well. So you can always leave them or you could always cancel them. So I'm going to actually leave mine. I'm going to go ahead here and click finalize visit. And just as finalized everything off, and I can come back into my planning board. And I can see obviously I only worked for thirty minutes, so it shrunk it down, but we extend the text right here. It has now moved over into a different status. So we know that we are going back out tomorrow. We're going to work on this job and get it completed at that point. All right, so that is how everything interacts with one another. Even on our mobile side, you can actually create new work orders here. You can view your time that has been submitted for you as the user. You can see it by job, by hours, by work type, by day. All of that is visible here. And you can also search certain orders to be able to actually just go ahead and directly work on them. All of this is one hundred percent configurable if you want your field technicians to have that ability. Same thing with that history. They can just go directly into the history and start filtering themselves. If you create that work order, it's exactly like we did on the planner side. Is you can then come in here, you can find your service item that you want to work on. And you can also go directly to the customer as well. If you knew all that information, it obviously does have to exist over within the ERP system. So I can now start creating my service item right here. And here now I can say, yes, this is what I want to work on. I add my description or transmission, let's say. And I can say that I need to start this immediately today for about two hours. I can fill out all of my information, click Next. And now it's just having me review everything. I can click Done. And now I have created my job or my visit to actually come out here. So if I go to my overview page and to see my jobs, I can now see my four transmission. And I can start going forward and doing my travel and start time and start manually adding all of the data in directly from the field. So that is our planning side as well as our mobile. So I will hand it back over to you, Jalisa.
Perfect, thank you. So now we'll go into the Q and A part. So I just have a couple of questions here. So the first one is, how long is the historical data available in the mobile client?
So the historical data is available for as, basically as long as on this, you know, your system is connected. So you're able to go back and see really anything and everything that you need to see as long as you haven't archived it.
Okay, and then we have one other question. So if you don't need all the functionality or need additional functionality, can you customize the planning board or the mobile client?
Yes, so you can. What I had just shown you is actually our Essentials customers. So that's a fixed, fixed price. It is, that's the client that you get with all of those features. And as we continue to develop what we call our Essentials client, it will continue to get new updates and new functionality that gets sent out. But you always have the ability to go through kind of a an in-depth review of the process and for us to understand what you're trying to accomplish. And if we then say, yes, this is more of a customized product, we can always move you to a premium product and scope of work as well.
Perfect, thank you. So those are all of our questions for right now. And so we'll move on to additional resources that are available. So as mentioned, we will distribute the recording afterwards. So you can go over it and take your time to review any of the materials. And we do have other educational videos on our official YouTube page as well. So you can always browse through those ones. And we will have other educational webinars in the coming weeks, so stay tuned for those ones. And if you have any topics that we haven't covered and that you would like to see, please feel free to reach out to me and we'll keep those in mind when creating future webinars. And lastly, if you are a customer, you can always contact support at expanded.com for any technical support. And with that being said, if you do have additional questions about the material that was covered today, feel free to reach out to me. And again, I will be following up with everyone individually, so stay tuned for that as well. Thank you, everyone, and have a great day.